All right, it's March nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-four, seven thirty P M. I'm gonna call the regular meeting of the County Willington Planning and Zoning Commission to order. Members present, myself, Bob Chabot, Andy Marco, Doug Roberts, Peggy Sinowski, Bill Vanelle. And I'm gonna seat alternate Michael Johansson, Pura Joseph Hall tonight. No applications for receipt tonight, no public hearings. Brings us item E, new business. Item one under new business, P Z dash twenty-four dash five, special permit renewal, section fifteen, excavation sand and gravel at sixty-six Navarre Road. Owner W. Williams. Wayne, you there?
Hello, hello?
Yeah, we're here, yeah.
Okay, I guess I'm here. All right.
State your name and address, please.
Yeah, Wayne C. Williams, one ten Onclan Road, Stafford Springs, Connecticut.
Thank you. All right, what do we have? It's special permit renewal for sixty-six Navarre Road tonight. Anything about that, Mike, that we? Different or we need a?
We, uh, we don't have any, haven't had any correspondence. We haven't had any really anything to do with the property. I think that this is pretty much an approval that they're keeping active, but the site itself is dormant.
Okay, is that, is that the case, Wayne? It's dormant?
Yeah, yeah, it's there. We, we wanna keep it, we wanna keep it, you know, active or, or keep our, our permit in place.
Okay.
It's kinda probably the same as the last time, yes.
Questions?
Are you calling material out?
Yeah, has anything been brought out or in in the last year, Wayne?
As present, no.
Okay.
Oh, wait, this is Andy Marco. I'm just looking, the, the map is part of the packet. I see a lot of Wayne C. Williams on other parcels. You own those other parcels too? I'm just curious.
Yes.
Okay, and I, I see other Williams, other families like Richard, and is that all family members?
Yeah, relationship. I don't know any, anymore than that.
Okay. Thank you.
Oh. We're all set, or no?
I have another question. How, uh, there was a little bit of chatter from, from some residents about motorcycles and, and other activity in the I know that, that I believe in the past you, you talked about that. How is that going? Are people still in there? People still using it?
Unfortunately, it's very difficult, not only my property, but other neighbors' property, all, all the power lines.
Yeah.
I have called the, uh, you know, Troop C on it to try to get them to go down, and catching them is pretty hard.
Yeah. But it is still had on. My question was that, I wasn't really, I don't, not saying that you need to.
I haven't heard anything real lately. There's a neighbor that bought some property there. I've talked to him. Um, and then the, the neighbors in the front, I've talked to them, not real recently.
Hmm.
I have told them to call me. I've been down there a couple times. Uh, trying to catch it. They say sometimes it's a Saturday or Sunday, but I have caught anybody.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, you're welcome.
Any further questions? All right, do we wanna, we wanna take care of this one tonight?
I think.
We should, all right. Mike, we take care of this under new business? Do we need to move it done and finished?
You can do it under new, in spur of one year renewal.
All right. Have a motion?
I move we that P Z twenty-four dash five, special permit renewal, section fifteen, excavation sand and gravel at sixty-six Navarre Hill. Owner W. Williams be renewed for one year.
Okay, any discussion?
All in favor? All right. You're all set, Wayne. Thank you.
Thank, thank you very much, and again, if you have any ideas on keeping them motorcycles out or if everybody's property.
I, I don't have any that are legal.
Okay, thank you very much. Have a good night.
Good night.
Thank you.
All right, brings us to item F, unfinished business, the commission discussion under home occupations. I see, uh, they're including something in here.
Yeah, so there's two things. One is just the current regulations
Okay.
that are on the books as of now, and then the other thing is a table, and so when we talked the last meeting.
We liked the table, the other town.
Yeah, so this is, so this is a table which is structured similar to the table you looked at with the same categories or, or criteria on the left. And then I took the existing language from our regulations and just tried to populate it in the best way so you could see kinda how it would fit. Um, so some of them you'll see are blank because we don't have, uh, we don't have anything that would kind of fit in that, like vehicles or percent of property used for occupation. But then you kind of can look at their criteria, um, for example, moving down the list to use restrictions. We have language which, uh, which would limit the use for the certificate of zoning compliance track, which we currently have. But we don't have any restricted language for the special permit type of home occupation. Um, which is kind of what we've been talking about. Um, and then we just, we have prohibited uses, which is the next category, which is across the board that comes from the definition. And so it just says across, again, home occupations shall not include, and then that's basically where that comes from. The next row is allowable uses, which is again from the definition of, of what it is, and we've talked about, you know, that includes a lot of things that probably we would never see, um, and doesn't necessarily include uses for things that we have or, or may, may end up with. Next one is permitted exterior evidence. And one side says shall involve no outside storage, no outside display of goods or materials or other evidence. And then on the special permit side, there shall be no visible evidence or indication of the operation from outside. And so that's where there's been some tough one gray in.
Well, that's just no sign and things like that.
Right. So the, so this is where I kind of touched on, you know, previously, well, if you can't from the road see something that you can tie definitively to the, to the occupation, then how do you, you can't necessarily say that it's in violation of that section. But, you know, a piece of construction equipment that doesn't have a sign, typically not something operated by a residential homeowner. So there's been a little bit of a.
Okay, what about a septic truck? What the name of it?
Right, and, and so that is one of the ones I'm referring to because I believe that at one point was told, well, I can't see that sign from the road, so I can't. How can I tie it to the business? Which is, which at least in my mind is not the way these regulations are written.
Because the second it comes down the driveway, guess what? You can see it from the road.
And a septic truck, in, there's no way that's subordinate to a single family use. You know, triaxial dump trucks and all those types of things.
There's a lot of those businesses in town.
Yeah, we know.
And you don't wanna, you don't wanna write them out. I mean, right now, they, wouldn't they be in violation?
Well, the, I mean, the issue is, there's been such a there's been not, not a heck of a lot of oversight in requiring everybody that has approvals to come back, maintaining compliance with the initial approvals, making sure things don't grow, and not really having standards to say. That I, I think the easiest thing is to just set a baseline that, you know, if there's any concern about whether something falls or some, or, or issue about how much of something that it would be by special permit. Um, it puts you in the position of having to review, but what that means is anything that exists is not gonna be all out prohibited because there's pathway or, right? So there's a way to kind of build that in.
But I don't think we're doing this to pick on people that have been there for years.
No, that's.
No, but you know how regulations can be used by others to.
I think one of the things that. And we, I, I, I think something that needs to be included in this is that if you have a home business, the property that that business was on should be in character with a residential neighborhood. I mean, there are instances, I won't mention the one that I'm thinking about, that he got an okay for a home business as a plumber. Well, all of a sudden, there's construction equipment, the yard's all dug up, there's commercial dumping of refuse there.
Yeah, provided with this.
Uh, so that impacts the surrounding area.
And that, and, and that is, you know, where that, I think, rub, which we kind of keep coming back to, even, even the members of the public, which is permitted exterior evidence, neither track based upon our current regulations would allow for construction equipment to be all over the yard. It wouldn't allow you to have a hundred and fifty yard stockpile, right? Neither, neither one of those would. But there's a lot of, a lot of situations, the businesses that I think of, and I think that's probably not something if someone took a photo, presented to the commission and said, this is what I wanna, I wanna conduct on my property, probably wouldn't say, okay, here's an approval.
Right.
And there's no way for them to have gotten here based upon those existing regs, but there's several of them.
It's, though, how is that addressed? I mean, in that particular situation, the landowner abutting trying to sell a lot, and everybody turns around and says, not next to that. So, I mean, where does that, you know, I don't wanna be in thorn in everyone's side, but it's a real situation that really happened. And we need, moving forward, we need to prevent that from happening in other parts of town. I mean, you know, you can take a look at Gipskies, and they've got plenty of acreage, I understand that. But when you drive by, their trucks are all parked on a paved parking lot. The garages are all well-kept. There's no piles of raw earth
No.
or anything else around there.
But it is visible evidence, according to the regulation.
It's, yeah, it's, it's visible evidence, but then you get onto this, you know, how many acres to get to the third, you know, that third tier, if we're looking at something that like Talon has. But, I mean, it's well-kept, and is it, I wouldn't mind living next to them.
Right, right.
You know, because they come and go, and they, and they, they really take care of their business, and it looks appropriate.
But the, the other piece of this is we can put regulations all over the place, but people can choose to violate them, and then it becomes an enforcement action.
Right.
Like, take a look at like the, the deal with that, with the old gun shop used to be that's still ongoing, it's still for the whole, and, you know, it's.
And it's hard to dip that in a butt when it's in the process of happening. So I asked Mike, what you know, having worked, working in other towns, how do we best approach a situation like that? In looking forward, how can we prevent something like that from happening?
Uh, one of the things that's different about the home occupation regulations here, and I, I equated them to what Ashford has, which they call rural business, but they, in, in their application, they're very similar. They differ dramatically from just about any home occupation regulation that, that I can think of in, in a neighboring town or any other one that I, I've worked with, but it's because just sort of the nature of the development and the way that the town has been constructed. You don't have the commercial availability. You have people that have parcels that are a hundred and something acres. So like, all of that has come together and allowed a lot of these to coexist without issue. Um, whereas in other towns, people get mad if someone parks an R V in their backyard. So like, direct, there's, there's not a lot of similarities. I, I'm racking my brain of, of any town that I have, that I have worked with or seen, and I can't, I mean, nothing nearby, Nancefield, Coventry, Bolton, I mean, you see Talon's, Vernon, Summers, Ellington, Stafford, I mean, they just don't have that, sort of that open end. Um, so I think the easiest thing to do is think about what you think is appropriate now. We'll draft regulations so that moving forward, there's clarity in how the regulations are interpreted and how we determine compliance. And then step two will be to figure out how to incorporate the necessary language so that existing operations that the town has told them for five, ten, or twenty years are good, now don't find, right? So we'll build that in. But we'll write the regulation to start with the assumption that we're talking about moving forward. Because if, if someone has fifteen trucks, and those, they have approval for us to be in the county, and the town's been giving them an approval for twenty years, we can't then say, oh, by the way, we don't like it anymore. Then we should not have given that first approval. Um, so I think we're just as culpable, the town, at least, in my.
I understand.
So we can build that in as a protection so that we don't have that.
Should, should, I have a random question. Should there be something where you can only have so many either certi- certi- certificates of zoning compliance or special use permits? And there's a max, because if, I would think after so many, you've exceeded your limit of home occupation.
Yeah, oh, like, weren't they operating under a special permit if they?
Maybe. Well, like, you're allowed one special permit or maybe two certificates of zoning compliance. You know, the two columns, and maybe certain businesses would fall under one side versus the other. Because to me, a special permit is something that's pretty good size, the plumbers, the electricians, but someone who's near home and gardening, a little garden in their backyard that's selling stuff, maybe that's a.
So special place is gonna be a more major thing
Yeah.
just the county house.
Right, so should there be some stuff falls into one, some stuff definitely has to fall into the other, in any of your gray areas.
Hey, could you look at it and write regulations to start chopping off some of things, saying that residential use properties can't be utilized for stockpiling of non-home use materials? You know, and kind of bite the apple in different ways, though that it's not just focusing on a specific business, but you can't just stockpile a mountain in a residential neighborhood if it's for commercial use?
If you say you're a carpenter or something, or, or working out of your, your home under a special permit, you're gonna have a certain amount of materials there, and that it shouldn't be like a, you know, a lumberyard, but
Right.
Yeah, there's probably gonna be.
Yeah, and then have the terminology, how do you?
Yeah, it's gotta be stored right now in the giant store.
How you manage it, right.
Well, we sure we get some orders in town, probably have a atrocious amount of things. Those towns do.
I don't know why, having not enforced it in the past, requires us to turn a blind eye to it forever in the future. I mean, renewal could be part of.
When you're going to renew, if you have people complaining, we have complaints on the record, now we have something to talk about. You know, usually requires somebody saying something.
And I'm curious about, we, we never really talked about it, what happens when a business grows to an extent that to a, to the, a reasonable person would say, this kind of belongs in a commercial zone, rather than.
But we don't know, it started saying how many vehicles.
Yeah, right, I know, that's what I mean. We don't really, we don't really address that, that a business, we want businesses to grow, but it doesn't necessarily mean that they and they don't. within the, within the acreage that's provided to them. Again, like Gipski's a good one. They used to call themselves custom farming, when they got a hundred and ninety acres or something, buddy of places the high stuff. I think of Sado, he's got forty acres, but I think Dad and Sons on Lucian Road, they're right there. And the signs on their trucks, the evidence is very clear. They're a great business, everybody loves them, nobody wants them to do their things about them. Right, right, there's a lot of positive things about them, but they have a little tiny lot, and their trucks are right by the road. There's no way to hide it. And yet, that, to me, that's a fine home business. They don't conduct any business there. They drive off and do things mostly in town and the surrounding towns. You sure don't wanna penalize them.
No, I, I'm not inclined to do that either.
No, I know, but I mean, but, but then there's, you know.
Like, you don't wanna nuisance to the neighbors.
No, we don't wanna nuisance.
Complaining and.
No, no.
Things come in all hours of the day.
Exactly, and I, I think the nature of the business is, is a part of it. But I just can hear the voices from the public that they'll say, oh, evidence, there's your evidence, and you can't have that. Kind of came up with the, with Litwin and his propane business, you know? People saying, I can see it. Well, yeah, in the wintertime you can, summertime you can, so, you know, a lot of things show up.
Well, that old tangent came, came to the surface when you wanted to buy the propane truck.
Yeah, right, that's right, when you wanted to buy the propane truck, and it was, but it was a, you know, it was fairly, not contentious, but it was certainly, certainly a concern, and it was brought up, and it was something we had to deal with.
There's a section on here, I mean, so we have under percent of building use for occupation for the, the, the minor, the certificate of zoning compliance, it's twenty-five percent. And then for the, for the special use permit, it's fifty. There's a, then you look below, it says, and so fifty, it's within accessory building or livable floor area of the property. So again, they're not saying anything parked out in the back forty or next to the garage, even if it's neatly, you know, lined up. But underneath it is a category which we don't have standards for, but was in that table, percent of property used for occupation. So you could say, you know, which, which speaks to that exterior element, right? If you have a vehicle, if you have materials, if you have, you know, whatever. So we could, we could start thinking about putting something there.
You just gotta be careful if you get somebody like with the, the tree removal guy, you just mentioned, and he's on a small lot, and he's got seventy-five percent of the place tied up in trucks and everything.
And what about non-resident employees? Does that mean onsite? I mean, define that one. So what if you, what if you're a guy that, say, does demolition, and you have a bunch of people that you made at the job site? Well, you still have more, you still have more than two non-resident employees in your business, and yet it's all occupation in a residential zone. Yet, is it an if? Does it impact the town? I don't know, but if the regulation says two non-residents, or no, no more than two.
Houses across the street.
Now, you're kind of, now there's like, crazy situation. I know.
It's like we're just after. We need the catch-up police.
We're gonna have the catch-up police.
When you say the percent of building use or the occupation, and you're talking about twenty-five percent or fifty percent of the livable floor area, then you're going inside the building where it's not even visible to the.
Right.
It's, I don't even know how this is enforceable. And to be honest, if I'm a carpenter, and I got a two thousand foot home, and I wanna convert the whole thing into making cabinets, why is the town gonna have a problem with that?
Yeah, right.
And if I build an accessory building, and I wanna build cabinets, why can't it be a hundred percent of the accessory building?
Yeah, I mean, what if you wanted to construct something that was larger than a cabinet, and you, it would be, it would be very easy to need a three or four, five thousand square foot workshop in a barn, but maybe you don't need everything else. This is, that is the regulation that most frequently creates a rub when people ask or they're talking about it, when we're looking at applications, even the, some of the ones that you guys have approved that have been new over the years. Because twenty-five percent, if you don't have a large house,
Yeah.
it's not a lot.
It's an office, right, a couple offices. Or somebody doing like, say, psychotherapy in their house, they're gonna have a little waiting.
Yeah, right, yeah.
Yeah, an office or whatever.
They used to do dentists in my house.
There are years ago, with one chair. If you can be, you can have a barber in town with one chair.
Yeah, right, yeah.
One, and one chair, it says here.
There used to be quite a few of those around town.
And I think of homeowners that have a whole bunch of stuff, and they can put it anywhere they want, but they're not a business.
At least you said that.
They're collectors.
Collectors.
That's me, I'm a collector of everybody. I'm a collector.
I remember we had some similar discussions of this and the whole thing is going on.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, so it's, it's a sticky thing.
Because that's a fine line you walk. You don't want like something to grow out of proportion and disturb.
Well, that's right. Exactly, that then things things can grow out of proportion.
But I think you're putting in a check at those big special permits that they come back every so many years. Are you maintaining? Are you growing? Have you started to exceed what things?
Right, well, it's, it's, it's the most, it's two years, so they have to. Have we been doing this? Renewing every?
Well, so that's, I mean.
Are you been doing it with staff?
Well, that was one of the things is that a lot of these would come in originally, get their permit, and then they would come back, and all the reviews would be done as staff.
Okay.
Um, I, I would have to look back to the originally.
How many?
Well, they, all the home occupations were processed as staff renewals when I got here. I don't know how many of them were originally approved as a special permit.
Talking eighty businesses in town, we're talking sixty.
I don't think it's, I don't think it's, it's, no, I think it's under fifty. But I don't know how many the commission's issued over the years. They may have just never come back, but I don't think the commission wants that.
Your, right.
The, you know, home occupation, you know, also every year, you know, I think that, you know, you gotta use some kind of sense here.
I think the zoning, personally, the zoning compliance ones, the small, if, if you get that, that's every five year you come back and renew. But I can see the special permit every two to three years.
What's the permit cost?
Um, the special.
No, they hold their certificate of zoning compliance.
It's around a hundred bucks.
Okay. So what's that worth to the town a year? How many, yeah?
Well, like I said, we give sixty to the state.
It's not much at all.
The biggest issue is they don't, we, we have to actively pursue those renewals. They don't, they don't show up and say, I'm here for my renewals. Only the, the sand and gravel folks do. Everybody else, we have to, I mean, the way that it was done.
Did they get a letter or something?
Right, they were, they were hand drafting letters, mailing them out, saying, your permit needs to be renewed by such and such a date. Here's your second reminder. And it was, right, essentially back and forth. We do it through the permit system now, and so some people are really good, and other people.
You can do it online, just do it.
You can.
Is there a difference in a fee if it's one year or five years?
We do it based upon the application. So with special permit, site plan, zoning permit would be how the fees would change. Um, but I think, yeah, especially for the zoning permit, if they violate something that's in the regulations that, with regard to vehicles or outdoor storage, then the processes that we go through the, you know, the enforcement channels, which would be the process if they came to you and you said, oh, we don't like what this looks like, you're still gonna have to go through the enforcement process. You can't just say, we changed our mind, we, we turned it this last time. Um, maybe with a special permit, you have a little bit more, but I don't think we really have any fast track that we can assign for something that goes before the certificate of zoning compliance or even the site plan. So it really just comes back, if there's a violation or there's a complaint, they're not meeting one of those criteria, and we will go through the enforcement process.
I'm wondering, moving forward, if we're talking about special permit, you know, someone gets to a, a certain size and needs a special permit? I mean, going, I mean, just right up front, if somebody decides, well, this is the business I wanna get into, and if they decide, well, that's, I'd like to branch off and get another business on the same. Is there some way that we can say that in order for a special permit, I mean, if you're to begin with, they have to have four or five acres?
I mean, if you're, to begin with, they have to have four or five acres so that. When they, when they get in, if they have grand aspirations, well, they're looking for a piece of land. That's not a, a two acre building lot. That has the capacity to allow them to expand. And maybe have two not office type of businesses. On site, so that they can have two or three trucks between the two of them instead of just, you know, pigeonholing them. And that way, they know going in what the limitations are.
We have to make limitations on vehicles right now. We have not.
Right. You know, just thinking about what, what's feasible, you know, talk to small businessmen.
No, I agree.
And, and see, you know, what would work for what we think would work in most situations. Would, that would take, you know.
Say you're a tree person, you know, you're gonna need bucket trucks, wood chippers, trailers.
Right.
Pick up truck or so forth, you know, dump truck, you know, the, the. Fire on the wood chipper to shoot the, you know, the chips into and all that.
Well, especially in town, I don't, I don't foresee the town going out and saying, oh yeah, we need to buy. A fifty acre parcel so we can have, we can have a, um, a, a business park here. So that's not in the cards. But we really should put it on the individuals. To understand what type of business there they have aspirations of.
Mm-hmm.
So they can find an appropriate sized lot in town when they come in.
I think if you, if you kind of classify certain things, if you're doing home delivery, then, you know, of a, any type of material. You know, you're gonna have X amount of vehicles, you know, no matter what, whether they be triaxles. Whether it be propane trucks, you know, you're going to have X amount of vehicles. So you're gonna need a certain amount of square footage for those different vehicles.
And that gives, that gives the neighbors some breathing room from what's going on in the property. Gives everybody a better opportunity to be a good neighbor. Well, like we do with farms, where you can't have, you know, we have to have five acres to have a horse or something, you know, there's probably maybe something along those lines like. A two acre lot, to see two vehicles on a two acre lot doesn't really stand out, even dream. But to get five or six on a two acre lot and it looks a little busy and a little cluttered.
Right.
And maybe there's something there about acreage and. I mean, after a certain acreage, it probably wouldn't matter. If you have only fifty acres, it probably doesn't matter anymore.
True.
But again, so sort of like farming, gotta have at least five acres to have a horse. Maybe there's something along those lines. Cause I think vehicle density might be a thing. Something like, some of these guys that have their triaxles and that's their business. You know, the name's on the side, it's evidence that it's there, but it isn't a tryst. It's, it's a single triaxle, you know, that parked in the yard. Doesn't bother anybody. Yeah, yeah. They have traffic trailers there, yeah. That's.
Yeah.
A whole and three twenty.
Yeah, but I guess if you have five of them on a two acre parcel, then it would probably look a little.
Maybe it goes a little bit of classification of how many employees you had, because if you've got X amount of employees. You can make the safe assumption that you're gonna have possibly X amount of pieces of equipment, vehicles for. That business operates. So maybe it's also tiered with claiming how many employees you actually have per that. Type of business in classification.
You know, contractors, you know, you can scale up and down manpower too, so you don't necessarily commit to that.
Right, right, right. Right, you can have a lot of trucks, some said idle.
You got three pieces of equipment to one guy.
Yeah, exactly right.
Yeah. Mike, I was wondering, um, you say that we have to send a certain amount of dollars to the state for every permit. What does the state give us for that? What's, what's the benefit? What's the benefit we're, we're achieving with that?
State statute that we are required to charge sixty dollars for every land use application. We transmit sixty and they allow us to keep two dollars as a processing fee. We do it quarterly.
Because if, if we're, if we're giving permits and ideally, we would be able to enforce certain situations.
Mm-hmm.
Rather than just say, oh, well, then state's kind of being a silent beneficiary in that. You know, they get the money, but they don't have to do anything about it. If you have a problem.
Yeah, it's a, it's a, um, it's too, I think deep. I think it goes to deep. Um, I, I don't know. I, I think there may be some, uh, language or some. Information out there as to what it funds. Um, I, I don't know off the top of my head, but.
We need even one problem, one permit problem strips our ability financially to deal with.
Yeah, I mean, depending on the type of application and, and what comes before the commission. We, we have to bear legal notices for every public hearing. So for a public, an application for a special permit that goes before you. And is not, you know, three or four words, um, you know, the application fee. Um, is in many ways not gonna cover our costs. Because we submit two legal notices upfront and a notice decision at the back. And which are around a hundred dollars each, eighty, and then we send sixty dollars to the state. So we have. Around three hundred dollars with a cost that, that for every special permit application that we see. And that doesn't include any time associated with, you know, processing. Um, we have to advertise in the hardware department because we don't have a newspaper that has substantial circulation otherwise. So based upon timing, they sometimes make us run a full statewide ad, which is significantly more expensive. So, um, I'm trying to look to see, uh, one of the most recent applications, but, uh. So our fees don't even cover our expenses? It would depend, it, it depends on, because like I said, the costs fluctuate a little bit on our, um. So they pay three, special permit fees, they pay three is three hundred and ninety bucks. That's what like Ruby Road, the one you just saw, that, that they pay. Sixty dollars goes to the state, so it takes us to three thirty. So if we average a hundred dollars per publication, then we arrow up for thirty, thirty bucks. But the alternative is you start charging four, five, six hundred dollars. You know, in a project like that, it's gonna then go in, they're gonna spend a hundred, two, three hundred dollars on the health department. Then they're gonna go for the building permit and they're gonna, they're gonna pay six, eight, ten grand. Because that's gonna be based on the cost of the project. Um.
So really our fees aren't that high when you compare it with everything else.
No.
Might kind of get lost in the mix, not necessarily noticed.
Yeah, the, the, I have never heard of, of any, um. Never heard anybody have any concerns, you know, about planning and zoning that we don't have. In Connecticut, we're not allowed to have what are called impact fees. So we can't say you're gonna pay twenty-five dollars for parking space. Ten dollars per square foot above this. We're not allowed to charge fees which escalate based upon the potential impact of a project. So we, we just set it and they pay whatever they, uh. Trying to look up like the, uh. Permit fee. Yeah, so for example, the permit fee for loves, the building permit fee for loves was two hundred and four thousand dollars.
Based on the value.
Based on the value of the job. So, um. You know, that's obviously an anomaly. Um, but that's usually the project. That's usually, uh, what they're focused on. The project cost was fourteen. Uh, one, two, three, fourteen million approximately for the building permit. They held trade separately, but. We're just a drop.
This is, they get their fee if it's a certificate or a special use permit.
Any, any permit.
Anything. And it's the same amount.
So for those, yeah, we charge, we, you know, ninety, so we get thirty, we transmit sixty.
And they don't really do anything for us for that sixty bucks.
They do, they're, we get, yeah, we, nothing specific to Wellington. I, I can try to look into what they, it's for, but. And on the wetland side, if, um, if the town does not act in, in an efficient manner on an application. The applicant can petition the state to issue a permit when the towns do have, and then the state can then charge the town. Or any fees that they feel are appropriate in their review of the application, but we don't have that on the planning zone side. Anyway. But we want some oversight, but we don't wanna hamstring anybody. One of the things that I, I looked up, um. Holland does not specify uses in the same manner that you can, you can't do. Uh, you know, a barber shop, but you can do ornamental glass and metal working. Their regulations really focus predominantly on the operation. Um, and I'm not saying that I think it's good or bad, but it is a difference between. One of the, one of the main differences.
You only have the legal notices when, when it has to be a special, when it has to be a public hearing, right?
Right. We also, we, we don't notice staff. We changed a lot of that too, right? Didn't we move, we probably Susan was still here, we moved several businesses into. Certificates instead of special permits. I don't remember what they were and I don't remember why. Some of those like, uh, like, I mean, some of the liquor store, we just, just said it's an automatic recall. We didn't make them come in anymore. Like, we don't, we don't see Wellington pizza every year. Maybe we do, but. No, those are just automatically, those are special permits.
Right, 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 right.
We used to, they used to come in every year and that changed. And the home occupation kind of warped a little bit then too. If I recall. I don't know, is the state thing that they didn't, we didn't have to, they didn't have to come in anymore for all those businesses?
Uh, unless it had something to do with their liquor license and, and any.
No, everybody used to come in, uh, so, uh. Eagle and, uh, they, all those businesses would come in every year and renew their permit. And it would be a public hearing. And then something changed and they just stopped doing it. And then the home occupation kind of just, it, it got softer then too. I don't remember what, why that happened. I don't recall anymore. I was wool gathering there, but why did we change that? There had to be some reason. Why we stopped everybody coming in for a public hearing for every single special permit. It was cumbersome.
Can you have tiered permits based on the size of the business and then only have a public hearing if you get complaints in the past year or? Within their cycle?
The special permits would be the only ones that I think you could bring back in front of the commission. You are never prohibited from having a public hearing. So even a site plan application, you can hold a public hearing. Um, you're never prevented from that, but you wouldn't. It would just get tricky with what you wanted to do after that. If you wanted to modify. I don't know if you can do it based upon complaints or something along the lines of if, if, you know, and I was thinking, you know, if staff. Identified a potential concern related to compliance or non-compliance, or if non-compliance was documented by staff. You know, subsequent renewal would require review by the commission or something like that.
Yeah.
Um.
Well, I was thinking, trying to keep the legal fees down to a minimum.
Yeah.
And if there's no problem with whatever occupation, um, even the size of it, then what, you know, it's kind of. Not, not very efficient to have everyone go in and listen to something that's not a problem. But then there, if there is a problem, then it wouldn't burden the staff to try to, you know.
How many home occupations out there with special permits? Would you estimate there are?
Uh, I mean, I think total, there's less than fifty period between both.
I'm thinking about the, the finals, the certificate, this is a special use permit. There's gotta be a much lesser number than that.
Right, yeah. I, 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 I don't know off the top of my head, because like I said, the, they renewed. Administratively, so that the way that they've come in, we'd have to go back and look through, you know, all the original permits. I doubt it. I can't imagine.
It can't be that hard to manage, so then, and we wanted to pull them in here once a year or something.
No, I, I don't think it would be a great problem. I think one of the things that is a little bit cumbersome and, and, uh. Cre- creates to me unnecessary work on both sides. It's like for the sand and gravel operation, we've got multiple applications, they do nothing. They're completely dormant. They don't pull a grain of sand out of the ground and they have to come back every single year. The regs, the regs say if you want it, you can do one year or two. If you do two, you need to have a public hearing. And based upon frankly, the public feedback, they don't, nobody wants to go to the public hearing, so they just go one year. So we bring them all in every year. They say, haven't done anything or done very little. So it's just more of that process, but I think you could write a regulation that would give you more flexibility for the amount of time. So that they didn't necessarily need to come back and.
And, you know, those aren't home occupations, but, you know, sand and gravel pit.
Right.
Uh, yeah, that does seem, seems a little unreasonable dragging it here once a year for something that nothing's been taken out of.
Yeah, and you could, uh, basically look at it, so businesses that have no, no external evidence. Don't need an hearing, or they, they can get a much longer permit.
So with, with the exception of like what we dealt with here a couple of years ago and what Bob's describing on a piece, next to a piece of property with the dumping. And so forth, and in that situation, how many complaints have we got? Home occupations in the last. Every homage.
People would have to know it exists as a, something.
Yeah, if there's something really bad, we're gonna complain.
Yeah.
Or maybe that business doesn't have.
One of the things that we have heard a couple of times, both persistently from one person about a business, but also from others about other businesses. Is that some of these folks and, and without speaking about any particular one, even if they have. Trucks that are stored in a building, even if they are neatly stored outside, even if the operation drive by is great, ninety-nine percent of the time. The one percent of the time might be five o'clock in the morning when they have a job at Groton. And all those trucks get started, idled, backed up and run down the road. And if it's a June morning and your windows are open and you're listening to the triaxles and trailers with lowboys and all those things running down the road every morning. You know, I, I, somewhere in my, my way here, I passed the FNF trucks which are coming up to the site and they're based in Plantville. And it's, you know, six thirty in the morning, so those trucks are leaving awfully early. So the complaints that at least are coming to mind for me. Are that they start so early that I'm hearing these things. It's a short duration.
So have you received those complaints though, like that kind of stuff?
And, yeah, and the complaints typically stem from, can they use, can they go, can't they go left out of their street and just not come by?
What do you do about it?
We tell them that we have no control over how they enter next to the site and what times, because we can't. That's what we, and it's been probably two years since we've gotten anything, but that's what the most recent one were.
But I, what I always has enough, say you have an existing business, been there for forty years, and all of a sudden somebody. Built a new house nearby or something, they're a problem now.
Yeah, right.
They're forever. That, that, that usually doesn't sit too well with me, that kind of stuff. But, you know, it's, it's another thing entirely though, if somebody comes from the home business starts. You know, bothering entire neighborhood.
I had to get my old neighborhood in Ashford farm that had been there for eons, eons. Two lawyers built a house that they could see the farm and tried to raise holy hell and say, we don't wanna see that in our backyard. We moved here and the town said, they've been here forever.
Yeah.
Too bad, you know, we're not doing anything about it. And they ended up selling and moving. But they tried to force their way that they moved out of the country for this.
That's the right answer.
Isn't that what you see in the countryside? Maybe some farms, maybe some.
And it's an incredibly kept property, like, I mean, it's, you know.
Sort of samples smell. When they spread the maneuver here shortly, you know, right down thirty-two, it's.
They, they, up thirty-two, that, that's chicken. They, they, up thirty-two, that, that's chicken minority, that's why. When you come spreading, it's not a blast of day, that chicken lasts for a week.
Just hope it rains really quickly.
Yeah, they'll start spreading soon to.
All right, where, where do we wanna go here again?
I, I'm hung up on this, no visible evidence, I think that was gonna bite us, that, that's gonna be that there's people that are gonna say, I can see it, it's against our regulations, and then we're gonna have to.
I think, I think we need to like do a few little tweaks, we just need to do the right ones.
I, I, if you want, I can try and get my hands around some of the, I, I don't know what information, because that predates me, I don't know what we have, but we, we have stuff, I can try to put together a list. I can try to, you know, may not have it for the next meeting, but if, if you want, I could try to pull together a list of approvals. We may not necessarily know what, how it was approved, but, you know, if I can tell you we have this, you know, and this is the business, we could probably go through them and get a sense of its own office. You know, this is a, a s- someone who travels and does whatever.
Um, I, I think that's the right thing to do. I, I do, and then to get a sense for what's here in town.
Yeah.
And we could get a sense of what it was originally supposed to be, and maybe we'll see something that we don't, and point that out. And, and that'll give you some perspective on what's actually maybe going on.
Do we wanna address, I mean, there's a couple of couple of times last year, how many home businesses are allowed?
On one piece.
On one piece.
I think that's where.
I mean, it can be, if it's just office-based.
So say, say somebody's wife's an accountant, and he's running a shop like under a special permit on the same property.
Yeah.
And then he's a realtor.
Yeah, then he's a realtor, okay.
Yeah, so you get three races up to that.
Yeah, so, is, now the question is, is that a problem or not?
Well, but I think if it's, if the business is office-based, there's no cause to have any external.
Unless you're, unless you're operating outside of the certificate of zoning compliance, but then bringing in a lot of clients.
Exactly.
And, and, and you're parking cars there, and you've got like more going on than what was originally.
Visual could become more of an issue if someone comes in and they have that moderate, they're a small business where they have their one or two trucks.
Right.
And then they decide, well, yeah, that's nice, but I wanna have this other business, and which requires two or three trucks that aren't necessarily what's needed for the first business.
Before you have an excavation business and it grows, and now you're, you know, rather than
Yeah. And that's my, my thought about requiring a certain amount, in order to have a business that needs a permit or a special application, you need to have at least four or five acres. So they have that little bit of buffer, so we don't have to worry about the business outgrowing or outgrowing in the neighborhood.
So we, we currently have no size limitation, you get a third of an acre and, and
Right.
And have a, a special permit type business there.
Because it's supposed to be located, you know, lawfully as something that is subordinate to a single-family home, so it just sort of assumes, well, if you've got an approval for the house, there's no minimum acreage tied specifically to the home occupation.
Those are blank on the chart too, percent of property used, vehicles are blank, so. I think, yeah, um.
Well, when we moved to town, we wanted to have a greenhouse business. And it was, oh yeah, your greenhouse can be fifty percent of the size of your square foot into your house. It's like, well, that's not gonna work, so, and our greenhouse is in Vernon.
Yeah.
You know, so that, that's the trade-off.
We regulate the size of accessory buildings or accessory garages on all, on every property. So you, the size of your accessory building is limited based upon the size of your garage. So even now, if you have a regular parcel, a couple of acres, if you wanna have a big garage, we've had people that they have some toys, they wanna put an RV inside, because they travel, they don't have a large home, they can't do it. On, um, commercial properties like that warehouse, there was a lot of discussion about how the who would look from the road. And, and you know, they suggested plantings and so forth. What about if we were to use that idea for places that, you know, have been in town for a while, that do have a lot of equipment, they could do some plantings and, uh, you know, create kinda like a, a buffer. Wouldn't be a big investment.
Well, one of the things that we, we did, we didn't require, I was gonna put a fence up.
Yeah, right.
You see what's going.
Which, oh, on, on, Ruby?
Yeah.
Yeah, the two, uh, the two pillars for the fence are up.
Well, the rails are up.
Okay, are they?
Some, well, the rails for that gate to slide off to the side.
Oh, yeah.
Suppressive, but.
I, I've not seen, have, have you seen a propane truck there? I have not seen them.
If they're there, they're parked way out back somewhere.
But I mean, the way that he presented it was that in the wintertime, they'd be up front, because he would be delivering propane, not doing septic, and they would swap. And, and I've not seen them, we've been looking, I, because that work has to be done when that part of the business begins. Um, and I haven't seen it, I just.
I think it's, I, I think I've traveled in, that's, that's, so running, all winter. I've seen it all winter, I don't think we've had a winter where you're not, and not fixing stuff.
Yeah.
You, uh, also, like when you're doing what we talked about, like, see what other towns say about like percent of the, uh, property used for the occupation, if they have any text, then I'd be interested to see.
Sure.
Same with vehicles. Just to get some perspective.
We're not gonna solve this overnight.
No, and like, yeah, and I, I'm, I'm really hesitant to like burden people that have been here a long time doing stuff, you know. I think we certainly can correct things going forward, you know, and, uh, can't be free for all, but you know, at the same time, you don't wanna discourage businesses.
Right, yeah, right. So I'm gonna work on putting together a list of what we have, I, I don't know how good it is and, and what information, but I'll, I'll see. The other thing that I've done in other towns is taking the business list that we get from the assessor and just plotting them on a map.
That's good. That, that would be interesting.
It's, it'll show us where they are, you know, we're gonna, I might be able to pull out, you know, obviously, like River Road, for example, is gonna have all kinds of stuff and, and seventy-four and that type of thing, we can probably pull some of those out, but it was just an idea, to get an idea of, these are the places that are currently reporting as a business, um, and it may be that they have a computer, or it may be that they have ten pieces of commercial equipment, but it'll give you an idea, if I can get them on a map, it'll give you an idea of where they are.
Yeah, that would be helpful.
How many of them are considered home, of those that are there, are considered home occupations?
Yeah, I'm most interested in these special permit ones, just the, the more major.
That's right.
That, that I count, you know, sitting in their house, and, yeah.
But if someone has a business, and it's a home property, that would be interesting to see who doesn't have, also, the other side, the flip side, who doesn't.
Good.
Well, some of these things that you'll have on a list, there are probably some, a lot of them won't be in business anymore either, like possible it's a small home, you know, if it's one of these certificate of zoning compliance types, you know, these kind of things come and go.
We, we, we don't have, as, you know, regular laypeople access to the information that's declared in personal property, it's not part of the Freedom of Information Act, so we can be told, here are the businesses, but what they declare, how much they declare, because it would be very easy to say, okay, we wanna see anybody who's declaring business value in excess of ten thousand dollars. But I, that information, we, we don't have. It'd be easy to pick out, to your points, a little more substantial.
We did like years ago when I was on economic development, there was a, a book went out, had all the town all the businesses in it.
Three or four years ago, they.
We manually updated it.
Twenty-ten years ago, you know, more, you know, maybe more like fourteen years ago or so.
I wonder when the last one was done.
We did it manually, we took the most recent and updated it by hand, and literally tried to call or email or reach out to everybody that was on there in twenty. Like, just before COVID, we basically finished it up. Um, but it is, it's very hard to keep websites and emails and self.
But there's something maybe listed, like an LLC, find something online about it, and now it hasn't been active in.
But, but I can try to see what information we can pull, get some of these lists together, and maybe we have the permit types, you know, maybe we don't, but a- and then the, the, just that list, and maybe we can plot it on a map, and, and that will give us some inclination.
Well, yeah, look at this, we're, we're trying to like potentially solve a potential problem, right? That's why we're doing this, so let's figure out what the problem is first.
Yeah.
And then take a look at some of the stuff and go from there, you know.
There are certainly a lot of sleeping dogs, a lot of these businesses don't bother anybody, are, they don't bother anybody, but they are totally in violation. They just don't bother anyone, and everybody around them is used to it, but it doesn't mean that tomorrow.
Doesn't mean we're gonna make more though.
Exactly. Yeah, but those calls could come tomorrow, you know, um. So I do think it's, it's, you know, good to straighten this out, but let me see if I can get a handle on what we have out there.
Hey, you, you, you just know, there's gotta be somewhere in town, people like repair cars or something, you know. Every town has that. Certainly not a home occupation under our rules, but.
Right. I mean, the, the home occupation that we did on Tom's template for the dentist, that's a fairly substantial operation, they built the house, so they met the criteria, but it's not just like one chair, I mean, they've got a parking lot. Yeah, it's the way the property is set, it works well, because the, the lower section. It's a huge piece of property, though.
Now, do we have anybody like that, that's a home occupation in town doing small equipment repair?
And I, to be honest, I don't know if he's operating, we haven't had any complaints, but. So.
That's why I thought of that.
It was fairly close to neighborhood, but we haven't had any, any concerns.
Good. All right, so we have some more stuff we have to gather, and we'll keep talking, and we'll get something here. I, I, I thi- I think this is definitely worth doing something with.
Oh, yeah. Well, now, there's the chickens.
I was walking around with a chicken, my friend said, you should take that for your picture for.
Approval minutes, uh, of March fifth, twenty twenty-four. Would you have a chance to look at them? That was all probably someone who will talk about.
Yeah.
I'm moving through the minutes of March fifth, twenty twenty-four.
Yeah, second minute. Any discussion? All in favor?
I'm staying.
Yeah, sorry, you were. I'm sure you read them.
No, I'm not.
Looked the video either.
All right, guy, course of fun, is anything?
No course of fun.
Brings us high to my, how would participation for items not listed on the agenda, do we have anyone in public? Not in person, how would online?
It's okay, well, not tonight.
Next time, Ralph, the next time.
Uh, well, yeah, it's coming, it's coming.
All right, very good. You gotta be worried. All right, item J, staff report discussion, item one. CRCOG, regional planning commission appointment.
I brought this up two meetings ago, that we have, uh, option or a seat on the Prague Regional Planning Committee, um, Regional Planning Commission, rather, um, so they followed up to ask if if there was anybody that was interested in representing Wellington. It's four meetings for the year, they're done via Zoom. So, don't think anybody was eager at the last meeting, but if somebody is, let me know.
I guess not at the time, right now, with the, how you're going on. I did go to one of these a few years ago. Then, well, they were in person at the time.
Yeah, yeah. From in Hartford or wherever.
Yeah, it's, it's worth it, if you're interested.
I know, there's so much interesting things to get collected about.
Yeah, it's, uh, but it's a lot about all towns, it seemed pretty far away for months, for the most part. Avon Farm, you know, it's all that.
Right, forty-two towns, I think, are in Prague region.
Yeah.
Something like that.
Yeah, but we used to be one, the eastern one, and then I tried one of those a couple times.
Yeah, Winco.
Winco, yeah, Winco. That seemed to make more sense.
Yeah, so when they, they proved, and they, the state disbanded several Cogs, uh, you know, we went to Prague. And really, most of the activities created our effort. There are benefits to being, yes, in Prague, access to monies and resources.
Well, it is, it's good for the town, but it's just from a planning zoning perspective, it didn't seem to relate much to our problems.
Yeah.
But their problems weren't.
Not a lot of overlap.
I didn't mean so, yeah. There's only four a year?
Four a year, four Zoom, Zoom meetings per year.
Could it be more than one person?
I think they, you can have like a backup, like.
Yeah, maybe two of us can split it or something, so it's not probably directly two meetings a year.
They're not gonna ta- tackle on you if you don't go to one either.
I can make it up.
Yeah, sure, one's great.
The crowd police, yeah.
I'm sure James Marshall knows. So if someone changes their mind or is interested, just let me know, and I'll re, and I'll, uh, get you situated. I, John Tean was on it previously, I don't know if he went to the meetings or not, I know he has it felt like they, uh, hadn't reached out after we had him appointed, so I don't know if he ended up getting anything with that.
But, and what, what, what days of the week would they hold their meetings?
It's during the week, I don't know what, what nights, um, I can find out though.
Yeah, you leave this on, on our next meeting, see if you can get that, because
Yeah, yeah.
Maybe I'll partner up with Andy.
Yeah, right.
We could split them, because I, I don't wanna do four.
No.
Well, you don't wanna make, yeah, yeah, don't wanna say I'm gonna do it and not do it.
That's right.
Yeah, it's lame. We could share the load, that'd be worthwhile.
So the meeting, here's. March twenty-first is the next, it's Thursday. Um, the next, one next one after that is June eighteenth, which is a Tuesday, September nineteenth, which is a Thursday, November twenty-first, which is a Thursday, they meet. I assume at seven P M.
And how long is the meeting normally run for them?
I don't, I'm not sure how long they go, so, except for June, they're on Thursdays and Sundays.
Yeah, like Thursdays for now are out for me because of the, uh, what do I, yes.
Right.
And we gotta watch our Tuesdays, because.
Right. Right. You guys have a heck of a schedule first part of the year. Work finance. Budgets, that's the rule.
Okay, you gotta put something out there for the town that.
All the money.
All right, well.
Contemplate, yeah. We're not gonna do anything between now and Thursday's meeting, so that basically means we've got until.
I mean, three meetings.
You know, three meetings.
Other than that, I, I don't have anything else, uh.
All right, your report. All right, it is uh, eight forty P M, meeting adjourned.